The following program was brought to you by the League of Women Voters, Oakland area. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan organization established to encourage citizen participation in government. It never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. The statements and opinions of the candidates are presented in the interest of public service and in no way are to be construed as endorsement thereof by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters takes no responsibility for any of the views or facts stated by the candidates.
Welcome to this forum for the West Bloomfield School election. Today is September 14, 2022. This forum will be featuring the nine candidates who filed for the West Bloomfield School Board. Vote for two for a six-year term. The sponsor of this forum is the League of Women Voters Oakland area. I am Dr. Cheryl Mitchell-Terrio, a member of the League of Women Voters. I am not a resident of this district. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, national, nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping the important issues that keep our community strong. As a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this one that has a great impact on local, state, and even national issues. If you are interested in learning about how you can make a similar impact, I would encourage you to pick up some of the League's information available here tonight or visit the website at www.lwva.org. The League of Women Voters does not endorse any candidate or political party. Views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and the sponsors take no responsibility. The format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask that the audience remain silent during the forum and please turn off your cell phones. We ask the candidates to answer the question with their views only and not interrupt another candidate. The questions are asked to all candidates and do not single out any one candidate. All candidates will be answering questions submitted by the audience and screened for duplication and appropriateness by our volunteers of Maxine Moonshine and Maureen Christensen and Judy Bateman. And our pages today are a wonderful group of students from the Oakland Early College. Please raise your hand pages so people will know where to submit their questions to you. They will be circulating with the paper cards and pencils for your questions. Please turn your questions into those pages. The format is as follows. All candidates will be given one minute for an opening statement in alphabetical order. Closing statements will be in one minute in reverse order. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question in rotation unless extended by the moderator. All candidates will be allowed equal time to answer questions. Our timer is Leslie Fimming. The candidates are Ashley Davis, Brian Dunn, William Art Holdsworth, Brandon Colasho, Ernestina Moore, Chris Tucker, and Sheri Ann Winter. Also on the ballot but not here tonight are Diane Holloway Brown and Jeremy Williams. We will begin the one-minute opening statements with Ashley Davis.
Hi, I'm Ashley Davis. I'm a lifelong resident of West Bloomfield. I attended West Bloomfield Schools kindergarten through 12th grade. I graduated from this very high school. I went to Michigan State University and earned a bachelor's degree in Biology and Secondary Education and a master's in Teaching and Curriculum. I taught in Royal Public Schools for over 10 years in secondary science. I currently have four children enrolled in West Bloomfield Schools. I'm highly active in the schools. I participate as often as possible in varying capacities. I'm on the PTO Board and I have been for four years in addition to coming to Board meetings and study sessions long before my kids were even enrolled in the schools. I've participated in district committees and the most recent one being the District Improvement. I'm the best candidate for this role because of my knowledge and experience in education, my lifelong involvement in this community, my vested interest in our schools, and my laser focus on our students and staff. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for coming out today. Thank you for having me. My name is Brian Dunn. I'm a parent of two young students in West Bloomfield. I have been a practicing attorney for the last 14 years. I'm a small business owner. I've been on my HOA's Board of Directors for the last four years and I worked in classrooms in Taylor and South Redford School districts for about two years prior to starting my legal career. I want to join the Board of Education to improve our academics. In recent years, like most districts, our education is taking a dive and I want to make sure that we refocus our attention directly on reading, writing, and math. The most important things that I think are reducing classroom sizes and then reviewing our curriculum. I know I plan on being here for the next 12 years. With your support, I hope we can grow and excel during that time.
I'm Art Holdsworth and I have a daughter in the high school this year. She just started. I retired about a year ago and I decided to get involved more directly with the community. I wanted to do something that was giving back to the community now that I had the time. And I chose to run for the Board of Education for a couple of reasons. One, probably most importantly, is I want to make sure my daughter and all the children that go to the schools here are safe and have the best education possible. I want to make sure that our school district continues to have a stellar reputation and advance that reputation to make West Bloomfield the number-one school district in the southeastern Michigan area. My background, I have an engineering degree from Oakland and MBA from Michigan State. I worked for Plant Moran as a consultant for 15 years and I was the Facilities Management Director for Oakland County.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event. My name is Ernestina Moore and I want your vote on November 8. I believe I can make an immediate impact to the school board. As a labor and employment attorney, I have the skills needed to manage a team most effectively and efficiently. I have the skills to balance multiple needs of various parties under the most challenging of circumstances, coming up with creative and workable solutions for all. Definitely skills needed for a board member. As a leader, I have the drive, vision, commitment, and passion to make a difference on this board. As an active parent within the school district, I am excited about building on the school board's current strategic plan and seeing it reach new heights and new milestones. With this platform and this ideology, I believe I can make an immediate and valuable contribution to the board. Thank you.
Chris Tucker?
Good evening. My name is Chris Tucker. I'm an 11-year resident of West Bloomfield. I graduated from Wayne State Baker College and IT and have been doing that at the same company for the last 22 years. I have six children in district. Our youngest is 10 at Chico. We have two 11-year-old girls in the middle school and then 14, 15, and 16 in the high school currently. Most importantly, we need to prepare our students for a future that excites them and we need to also focus on safety, which we're actually doing a fantastic job of, and definitely need to focus more on our children's mental health. Lastly, supporting our staff with more pay, more education, and more decision-making that they can give their input as well. Thank you for having me.
Sheri Ann Winter?
Well, thank everyone for coming out tonight. My name is Sheri Ann Winter. I've lived in West Bloomfield since 2005, so for the last 15 years. I have two children in the district, Dominic, oh, he's raising his hand. He's in the second grade at Doherty. My daughter Sasha is in the seventh grade at the West Bloomfield Middle School. I'm super active in the PTOs, been in PTOs since Sasha was in kindergarten, and she's 12. So that gives you a range of time. I have an undergrad degree in child psychology and a master's in health psychology. Myself and Vincent Kirkwood have co-founded the West Bloomfield Parks and Rec Diversity Task Force. So my platform is diversity, equity, and inclusion, and it would just be an honor to accept your vote on November 8. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Also on the ballot is Diane Holloway Brown, who could not be here today, but we do have an opening statement from her which I will read. "Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event and thank you for your presence. Due to an illness, I am unable to attend but would like to introduce myself. I am a retired educator with over 25 years' education experience in the K-12 higher education and the community. I am on the Board of Directors for the Myelocytosis Association where one of our goals is to bring about awareness and educate the community about this rare muscle-wasting disease. My passion for education led me to seek a position on the school board. I want to be effective in setting policies that positively affect students, the district, and the schools while helping the district's vision and goals in mind. I strive to be the best advocate for students, parents, teachers, staff, and the community with a goal to keep students at the forefront of all decision-making. When the community elects the school board, they place their trust in the board to make sound decisions. I ask for your support and trust in me. Thank you." Also on the ballot but unable to attend today is Jeremiah Williams, and I will read his statement.
Hello, everyone. I am Jeremiah Williams. I am a recent graduate of Wayne State University, a West Bloomfield taxpayer, a patriot, and a firm believer in the importance of quality education. My experience of our school system in the township of West Bloomfield is very stressing. The experience of friends and others that I know who are in the system now describe this curriculum. It is devastating from academic excellence to furthering political agendas. The environment is filled with identity politics, splitting peoples of different backgrounds apart, and overall, the current system is also not stable, able to address the rampant mental health issues that is loose in the school body. I believe in return to traditional values in the school curriculum and bringing back academic excellence. I believe in an education that has more parental involvement with how the curriculum is designed as well as the policies that are being instated by the board. The public education was meant to be for the people and by the people in school... Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right. Okay. So we will begin with the question segment of our program. Most questions will be with a one-minute time limit. We will begin with Ashley Davis. And the first question is, "In 2022, how many study sessions and board meetings have you attended?"
I can't put a number on it, but I have attended most of the study sessions and board meetings in 2022 and for the last several years before my children were even enrolled in the schools. So I've been very active at the board meetings and often give public comment.
Brian Dunn?
I've attended one board meeting, but I've watched a few others. I try and give my input back to the board when I get a chance. A lot of times they'll get spanned by me with the "About or Respond to Us" feature on their website. So I do try and stay active. I also email the school. I've been involved with emailing principals and in discussions with them as well. I try and stay active. I am busy with work and my two little girls, I got their five and almost nine. I'm trying to make as much time as possible. I am making time to do this and I feel that I will have no problem being able to attend all these meetings in the future.
Thank you, William Art Holdsworth.
Since May, I've attended all the board meetings and the study sessions except maybe one, I think. I was also lucky enough to attend an all-day strategic planning session that the school district put on this past winter, which was very educational for me, no pun intended. A lot of really good people that were there. And it's been great to have the opportunity to attend these board meetings and study sessions because you get a feel for how the board works together, what they're deciding, what their attitudes are. And the current board is a really good board and I hope that I'm lucky enough to be able to work with them. Thank you.
Ernestina Moore?
During this year, I have participated in several school board meetings in addition to working sessions. I was also actively participating in the superintendent search, attending those board meetings and stakeholder meetings as well throughout the course of 2022.
Chris Tucker?
I have attended several board meetings and I like to watch them online before actually attending live in person, and I have not done any study sessions.
Sheri Ann Winter?
Unfortunately, I was not able to attend any study sessions. However, I plan to go to several board meetings, but with young children, life happens and I always make sure I prioritize my children, and I did try to attend one online.
And this next round, we will start with Brian Dunn. And your next question will be, "What experience do you have with large budgets?"
Thank you. So I am on my HOA's Board of Directors and we're constantly making decisions with a large budget. We have 100 homes in our community. We're making decisions on road repair, deentrance design, things like that. So we are dealing with tens of thousands of dollars with regards to that HOA. In my legal practice, I also have to deal with repayment of debts. I do reorganization and insolvency. So we do have to go through and prioritize expenses that are going to be made by our clients. And a lot of times there are hard talks that we'll have with our clients, making sure that the priorities that are most important are being met. Those are my experiences. Thank you.
William Art Holdsworth?
So at the very end of my intro, I mentioned that I was the Facilities Management Director for Oakland County. So I was with Oakland County for 18 years. I was the management and budget director for the county for six of those years, a county that has a roughly $800 million annual budget. And for the last 12 years I was with the county, I was the Facilities Management Director, which meant that. I was responsible for a $29 million annual budget in our department, 200 staff. We also had a $10 million annual capital improvement program that I was responsible for. I was taking those, all the projects that went into that capital improvement plan to the board, Board of Commissioners getting the approvals, and then managing the projects. And the staff that I was responsible for managing handled all the construction, renovation, utilities, and security for 45 buildings.
Ernestina Moore?
Civically serving on several boards, I've had the opportunity to be very instrumental in assisting and formulating budgets for those respective organizations. In my corporate career, I have served and lead in managing large legal departments for various in-house, for various corporations in their in-house facilities, and that requires supervision and maintenance and responsibility and oversight for multimillion-dollar budgets. So I have very extensive experience with managing budgets and allocating the necessary funds appropriately.
Chris Tucker?
Currently, I am the chairman of the Advisory Committee at Four Towns United Methodist Church in Waterford. I'm also the Communications Director there. Been serving on the board there for at least four years and that is the extent of my larger budget experience. Thanks.
Sheri Ann Winter?
So in terms of managing large budgets, I was the secretary of the Misty Woods Association and Fox Point for the last probably about 10 years before I recently moved and bought a house. And that was an experience. Condos, associations, you have to really understand the community, the culture, and I mean, we're dealing with a lot of money and figuring out whether we raise dues or keep dues and then what do those dues include. And so being a secretary and being responsible for noting all of those decisions was something that I took pride in and something I would look forward to with working with the school board.
Ashley Davis?
I do not have a lot of experience with large budgets, but I have been involved on the PTO for the last four years and we have a budget which kind of ranges between $50,000 and $60,000. You know, we allocate those monies and use them appropriately for our students and activities. Even though I don't have a whole lot of experience with it, I'm a very fiscally responsible person and it excites me to learn more about the financials of the schools. And I would make sure to focus and prioritize our spending on teachers and students. Okay. Do you want me to say it again? I don't know what to do. Okay. I have been involved with the PTO budget, which is about $50,000 to $60,000 a year, allocating those funds to the students and events. Although I don't have an extreme amount of experience with extraordinarily large budgets, I am fiscally responsible and will prioritize spending on students and teachers.
The next question, we will start with William Art Holdsworth. The question is, "Who do you believe should make curriculum, textbook, or library book selections for the school district and why?"
Well, so first and foremost, you know, those are decisions that the board and the administration of the school district need to be making together in terms of the final decisions. There are two things that I think need to be said. One is that the educational professionals are the ones that have been trained and have years of experience to know what is most appropriate for the children at their given age and their different, in their given grade levels that should be making a lot of these decisions with the administration and the board's final approval. Now, should parents have a say? Of course, they should have a say. There's an opportunity for them to come to the board meetings. The board policies allow them the opportunity to provide their input and to make any objections that they might have. So again, the way that it's situated right now is a pretty good working situation. Thank you.
Ernestina Moore?
I think the decision ultimately lies between the school board working in conjunction with the superintendent. However, I think there are several factors that should play into that decision-making process that will be listening to the students. My daughter's an avid reader, so she can probably tell you quite a few books that should be on a list that are not. But also listening to the parents because the parents are the best assessments in addition with the students to know where their knowledge lies, where their interest lies, and what will be beneficial to them and appropriate at that age. So I think it's a combination, not one single individual that would help make up the decision-making process and ultimately have that decision made by the school board in conjunction with the superintendent.
Chris Tucker?
I believe a lot of different people need to play a role in it, specifically our staff. They are with our children every day and interacting with them and can judge their levels. The final say is obviously with the school board itself approving or denying those interactions. And parents, of course, are the same thing. They, you know, are participating, doing their homework with them, finding out what does excite them in learning, and they can be a pivotal role in deciding what the curriculum should be.
Sheri Ann Winter?
So my thoughts on that would be it needs to be a collaborative effort. I think we need more awareness amongst the community and parents and children that they should advocate for what they would like to see as part of the curriculum. I would say my experience is working with my small children. We lack diversity in some of our curriculum and that's something that I'm looking forward to with working with the school board on, whether elected or not. So I think it's a collective effort and we need to make sure that parents are more aware that they do have some say, even though the final decision comes down to the school board in regards to how that curriculum is rolled out.
Ashley Davis?
Can you state the question?
Who do you believe should make curriculum, textbook, or library book selections for the school district and why?
So I also agree that it should be a collaborative effort, but the curriculum and the grade level standards themselves are mandated by the state. So our, yeah, sorry. Okay. So what we teach is mandated by the state through the grade level standards. How we teach it and the textbooks and the library books that we provide and use to teach that curriculum is what the school board gets to decide. So the school board gets to evaluate the programs that are normally piloted by teachers, but I think there should be more parental involvement in that conversation.
Brian Dunn?
Thank you. So the decision ultimately comes down to the school board, but it does need to be involved with parents, teachers, the superintendent's office as well. I think parents and teachers have access to the children, obviously, and the student's input might help too. They can give a lot of insight to the school board with information that might not be available otherwise. The school board ultimately, though, is the one that has to bear that responsibility, but they can't go through every single page of the book. They do need active parents and they need active teachers to come and speak up.
Our next question, we will start with Ernestina Moore. The question is, "Post-COVID shutdown, please explain your plan to handle the emotional stressors for kids and getting back to education healthfully."
I think in this area, I think that's a very pertinent question because social-emotional learning, which is one of my platform items, I think will be very integral in helping assist us in this space because it gives the students an outlet. In the pandemic, a lot of their emotional issues in home life were exposed and this will allow them to have, to come to school in a safe place, a safe learning environment, and give them the skills necessary to cope and manage those, whatever their social-emotional issues may be. It gives them the opportunity to have that environment, to be in an environment where they thrive and be successful in their academic achievement because we're still dealing with the lingering effects post-COVID in terms of declining test scores, again, the learning gap between the lost instruction time, the lost school time. So I think it's very pertinent that we do address those issues for our students.
Chris Tucker?
As I said in my opening statement, mental health definitely needs to be focused for our children. If they need help, they should ask for it and be accepting and asking for it and it should be provided upon their first request. Definitely being back in school, I'm sure is helpful for all of them. They get the social interaction. That's definitely instrumental to their development. And that's about it. Thanks.
Sheri Ann Winter?
So I agree. Mental health is key, is very important. So having two degrees in psychology, I'm all for mental health across the board, not just for our children, but for our teachers and our staff and our school district. I think the answer I would give for this question is that it's important to tie it into the curriculum and to the teachers' classrooms because I think it's important to teach stress management. If we learned anything from COVID is how do we handle stress and what are some best practices that we can teach our children in the event something like that happens again. So I think it's important to recognize it. I think it's also important to recognize the impact that it's having on us even though things are back to somewhat normal. I just think it's important to make sure that our students learn from the experience, be able to express their feelings, and be able to recognize the impact and be able to deal with the stressors, whether it's COVID or something else.
Ashley Davis?
So mental health has definitely been an important topic for both the teachers and for the students. We should have more support staff such as social workers, mental health specialists. We should have more support staff, such as social workers, mental health specialists. We need to have smaller class sizes so that the teachers can learn about their children more, have better relationships with them, and really address their needs more individually. And I really believe that we should structure the days a little bit better to give the kids more breaks, whether it be more recess, or the older kids might need longer breaks or longer lunch, but I think our kids need more time to socialize and be kids.
Brian Dunn.
Thank you. Number one thing for me is reduce classroom sizes. In my experience with my daughter currently in elementary school, we see our elementary school sizes between twenty-four to twenty-six, or twenty-eight children in a class. When I've talked to other candidates in other districts running for school board, they're looking at classroom sizes, at least what they've told me, seventeen, seventeen to twenty students in a classroom. This gives the teacher a lot more time and opportunity to have discussions with children, involve with them, engage with them one-on-one, communicate with them, learn about them more, meet their needs. If they do need more needs with schoolwork, if they need more needs as far as emotionally, they can reach out to the parents because they have more time. I can tell you, I work a lot for my job. If I had to compress that into a six-and-a-half-hour school day, I, I think I'd be super stressed too. Thank you.
Well, I agree that not only mental health has been and continues to be a major issue that we need to address, but also that social emotional learning is one of the ways, one of the tools that we, we have and that we need to continue to expand to help our students overcome the issues that they've experienced not only during COVID, but that they continue to experience just through growing up, which is not always an easy thing to do. When we talk about expanding social emotional learning, we have the funding issue that we have to address. There are communities, community partners and providers that we can reach out to and grant funding and so on that can help us with that. What are the stressors that are creating the mental health issues? There's all kinds of things, family issues, feeling safe or unsafe in school. We need to take, make use of proactive advising. We need to involve everyone from the bus driver to the teacher to the principals in terms of helping us identify students in need and helping them out.
The next question, we will start with Chris Tucker, and the question reads, why are you running? Is there a particular issue you want to change or improve?
As I said, I want our kids to have an education that really prepares them for the future and excites them. I, again, I have six children in district, so I hear six different things when they get home from school every day, six different viewpoints, six different likes and dislikes. And I just knew it was a time for me to be more involved in the community, and I think the board is the best way of doing that. If you can't affect, you can't affect change by yourself, and on the board, obviously, there's a large collective of people, so you all have to agree. You can't singly, single-handedly change the world, but we will do our best. Thank you.
Sheri Ann Winter.
I decided to run for the board for several reasons. One, I feel like it's the next clear step after being super involved into the schools with PTOs. I feel like I want to be part of the solution, not part of the problem, and by doing that, I want to put myself out there to lend support to the school board on behalf of this district. Also, I'm very passionate about diversity, equity, and inclusion, and as I mentioned earlier, we have a lot of work to do in terms of diversity and equity and inclusion in our district, from the representation that we have or lacking in our teachers and staff to the diversity being handled at the grade school level and middle school level. So for those reasons, I felt this would be a good opportunity for me to become part of the team that can help provide solutions that focus on diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Ashley Davis.
High-quality schools are the most valuable asset for our kids, our families, and our communities. I've been involved on a smaller scale with my children, supporting my kids, the kids in their classes, and the teachers that they interact with, and the more that I get involved in that, in that capacity, the more it becomes apparent that I should really try to focus more on all children in this community and not just my own. And I think with my experience in education and my passion for this community, I think it would be a great fit. As a mom, I know that our kids' future lies in their educational experience. It's, it's vital, and I know as an educator how important it is to have board members that are teacher and student focused, and that's exactly what I intend to do.
Brian Dunn.
I want to run to improve our education. Our M-step math proficiency for 2021, 2022 school year was thirty-eight point eight percent. That's the proficiency amount for our students, third to eighth grade. Our reading proficiency was forty-five point nine percent. Both of these numbers are below the county's composite score and has fallen at a higher rate than the county's composite score since 2019. Again, I think a big problem with that is classroom size. We are thirty percentage points behind Novi in math for proficiency. We're thirty percentage points behind Northville for reading. We need to set those as our benchmarks and our goals. This is a fantastic community. There's hard-working people here. Everybody got here through hard work, diligence, perseverance. Nobody got here on a free ride. I want to make sure that our schools put our children in position where they can achieve that as well.
William Art Holsworth.
Cheryl, can you repeat the question, please?
Why are you running? Is there a particular issue you want to change or improve?
My, the, the primary issue that I felt that I could bring a lot of value to here is the safety and security of our, our students. I was in charge of a twenty-four million dollar security building enhancement project at the county. Working with the security consultants and sheriff's office, I learned a lot about what makes a building secure, but also the people aspect of that and what, how we need to make things functional as well as secure. Beyond that, the academic advancement of our students and making sure that our students are, feel welcomed in the school district. And I wanted to echo one of the things that Sheri Ann said. When I was out collecting signatures for my nominating petition, the issue of diversity in the schools among the staff and the, and the teachers was a major issue, and that is something we need to address as well.
Next question, we will start with Sheri Ann Winter. The question reads, describe.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Do you know the question? Do I need to repeat it? Okay. Why are you running? Is there a particular issue you want to change or improve?
So I know this is in jeopardy, but I'm going to answer a question with a question. Why not? I think this is a critical time in the district, and a critical time where someone can come immediately to the board and add value. As we've already spoken about, there's a learning gap due to COVID-19. This is something that has personally affected my household, and I'm sure many others. But also, I want to make sure that there's someone, in addition to the current board members, there to advocate for the students and the community, and also to make sure that we're always keeping the children in the forefront of any decision-making possible. What would I like to see changed? To address the learning gap created by COVID-19, I'd like to see us take continued efforts to attract and retain the top talent in terms of teachers, enhance our curriculum to align that with the learning capabilities that our students have yet to demonstrate. But I think definitely this is a critical time that someone coming to the board can make a critical factor, a critical improvement, and be a critical decision-maker to continue to push this district past the status quo and positively address some of the challenges that we currently face.
The next question is, describe your perspective on the school of choice and how it's been applied in West Bloomfield, and any changes you'd recommend, and we're starting with Sheri Ann Winter.
I think, sorry, the mic has a delay on it. I think the school of choice is, is wonderful. I think you give the opportunity for students who may not live in our residential school district area, the opportunity to take advantage of our school district and what our schools have to offer. I think that there needs to be rules and controls in place to ensure that it's not abused, but I think the idea of it, and idea of making sure that schools are equal amongst students who want to engage in our district are out there, I think that's the way to go. So I, I appreciate school of choice. I think it's a great thing.
Ashley Davis.
I think there's pros and cons to everything, and school of choice is no different. The pros are pretty apparent. You have more kids, you have more money, you can have more programs, keep more staff. There's a lot of pros to it, including giving families choice. So that's always a, a positive. I think the cons are a little bit more complex because when you bring in a school of choice student, we get the lesser of the two foundation allowances. So you get some, sometimes less funding for the school of choice student than you would for a resident. I think another concern is the data shows that they do not stay long-term, so we're trying to sustain our district on a pretty unstable population. We're also a hold harmless school, so our residents have to cover that home, hold harmless cost in their tax paying, which comes up to be like a million dollars per year. So I think school of choice should be an option, but I do feel like it needs to decrease in our district, and we should really try to focus on getting some of our residents back in our buildings.
Brian Dunn.
My initial thought was that school of choice is fantastic. I love competition. I want to compete against every other school district out there. We have fantastic teachers. We can bring these kids in, and we can teach them. I, I think the biggest complication we're going to have is retaining these students. When students only come for a year or two, the proficiency level significantly decreases. I'm not saying we need anything legally binding, but we should have them sign a pledge that they plan on keeping their children, children in our school district moving forward, and that it is best for their child and also best for our school district. If we can't do that, if we can't figure out the, the best way moving forward, if we're unable to raise up our standards and reach those top school districts in the county, then I think we definitely need to reassess at that point. But I think we, we can do this. We have a fantastic staff. It, it's about managing it properly and expressing to those families exactly what we expect of them and what they should expect, expect of us.
Art Holsworth.
I am very supportive of the school of choice program. My oldest, when we moved here thirteen years ago, actually got in through school of choice because we were up in Waterford at the time, and it was taking forever to sell our house because that was during the housing bust. I think that one of the best things about it is it provides an opportunity for people from other areas to come here, take advantage of the great educational opportunities we have in this district. If I understand correctly, if I got the number correct, we're something like thirty percent school of choice here right now in this school district. So there's a lot of people that have been fortunate enough to come here, and I want to continue to, to support them and continue to support that program.
Ernestina Moore.
As we all know, school of choice has been a divisive and hot topic over the course of years, and as someone mentioned, it's a transient population at times, but I think we can spin that negative perspective of school of choice into a positive. Those transient students, if, once they see the offerings, not just of the school district but the surrounding community, maybe they will transient themselves to West Bloomfield and aid us in our efforts to retain and attract more students to the school district. So I think school of choice has its place, and it definitely can be a positive measure and a way of a pipeline of getting more students to be residents and to be residents within the West Bloomfield School District.
Chris Tucker.
I've been a longtime West Bloomfield resident, but initially I was in the Waterford District in West Bloomfield, so my kids were brought in by school of choice. I am not a big fan of school of choice based on the percentage of students that we're taking now. It increases class sizes, increases our budgets, and we don't get as much money for school of choice children as we do our resident children. So I take the unpopular stance of I think we need to reduce school of choice drastically.
The next question, we will start with Ashley Davis. COVID exposed a multitude of challenges, including listening to our children's needs. Flu season is upon us, and many students are stressed with an impending possibility of masks being mandated. Will you support these possible mandates or allow each child to have governance over their own body as to what is best for them?
So if I was an elected board official, I would have taken an oath, and if there's any laws or mandates put in place, I would have to abide by them. So that's what I would do, although I think I would prefer to have children have a choice. But if there is a mandate, that's what I would abide by.
Brian Dunn.
I would oppose any mask mandate implemented by the school board. Large studies showed throughout the two thousand twenty, two thousand, I'm sorry, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year that when you look at large cross-sections of America, counties with mask mandates had no significant difference in COVID case count from counties that did not have mask mandates. There's no, and, and again, we're talking about county mandate or school mandate levels. I would leave that to the parents, and I'd leave that to the students to make those decisions. I would not impose on their health choices. If there was a county mandate that was imposed again, I would make sure that I would follow up with the county immediately and often to find out the most recent data that they have in favor of that. I did that as a parent last September, and frankly, I did not get sufficient information back from them. Thank you.
William Art Holsworth.
To be honest, I liked Ashley's response. I would let the science and the med, medical doctors, the CDC and so on, make the decision as to what ought to be done, and then I would follow that decision. Of course, it's a, it's a decision that the entire board needs to make. But having worked in the public sector for a long time, you know, you are responsible for thousands of students here, and if even one of them got seriously sick, or God forbid, passed away because we didn't do anything and everything that we can to protect, protect them, then shame on us.
Ernestina Moore.
When I first heard the question, the first thing that came to my mind was safety, that first and foremost, we need to put the safety of our children first. And if the CDC or whatever regulating body deems it necessary, based on whatever the facts and circumstances are, that there be a mask mandate, then that's appropriate that we take that same measure. But again, there is a choice to be made within that respective household, by that respective parent, but given the requisite data on that topic, I think we all would be safe and careful in making the right choice. Thank you.
Chris Tucker.
I think following the Oakland County Health Department is our best option. I don't think that we should impose masks on anybody. I think it is the parents' choice and the children's choice, more largely the parents because our children aren't always educated enough to make that choice for themselves. But during COVID, when we were back to school and masked up, five of my six children did contract COVID, even though they were wearing masks. Now, if you've ever been to a school or watched the children wear masks, nine out of ten of them aren't wearing it correctly. It's down over the nose, or it's up over the mouth, or it's just hanging from an ear. So I think it's a decision that has to be directed from the Oakland County Health Department and largely the parents' choice themselves.
Sheri Ann Winter. Can you repeat the question, please? COVID exposed a multitude of challenges, including listening to our children's needs. Flu season is upon us, and many students are stressed with impending possibility of masks being mandated. Will you support these possible mandates or allow each child to have governance over their own body as to what is best for them?
Thank you.
I would allow the parents to make the choice for children who are of age that are not able to decide for themselves. So this I take very personal because neither one of my kids contracted COVID. They wore their masks. However, my son started kindergarten during the pandemic, and he ended with a speech impediment and had a difficult time academically because of the virtual nature. And so the mask, wearing the mask attributed to that, and it's unfortunate because for a whole year, he wasn't able to really read the lips of the teachers. And when I brought it to the support staff of the school, their explanation was, well, a lot of students are having the same issue. Well, we need to make sure we can support. A lot of these students are having the same issue. In addition to that, the mask caused nosebleeds for my son, and it made, it able, so he wasn't able to go to school because he kept getting nosebleeds. and it made, it able to say he wasn't able to go to school because he kept getting nosebleeds. So for that reason, I think it should be parent choice.
This next question, we'll start with Brian Dunn. Hypothetically, the district is facing a $2 million budget shortfall. How do you make the necessary adjustments? What would you cut?
That comes to me first? All right. I would look at non-classroom spending as much as I could. Whatever I could cut outside of, in the classroom, I've told you a few times already, I favor more teachers, less students in each class. So that would still be my priority. Other non-academic spending that we would have, would have to make the cut. As far as specific programs, I don't have anything in particular in mind. We'd have to look at the budget at that point.
William Art.
During the Great Recession, we had to do this at the county. Every department was given a budget task to reduce their budgets by between 5 and 10%. There are always creative ways that people can take to reduce their operational expenses. I agree with Brian that the main focus, of course, needs to be on the educational academic side of things. First and foremost, for the sake of the students. The board has done a great job of building up a positive equity in the district's budget. So that would obviously need to be tapped into to help reduce that budget shortfall. If it's a short-term shortfall, then great, that's an easy way to fix it is using the equity. If it's a long-term structural issue, then we have to take a look at the structural changes that are a little harder to make.
Ernestina Moore. Hypothetically, the district is facing a $2 million budget shortfall. How do you make the necessary adjustments? What would you cut?
Well, making any sort of budgetary cuts is never an easy decision. So it's, and it's definitely not one I would take lightly. I would first take the initiative to look to see what less critical spending could be cut. But definitely with a focus on not cutting anything related to curriculum, student hiring, I'm sorry, teacher hiring or retention. But more the critical things would not be an issue in terms of being touched as it relates to making up for this shortfall. But definitely doing my due diligence and seeing if there are alternative or creative ways to think outside the box to manage this shortfall that we've now inherited by some way, shape or form. But definitely wouldn't take that decision lightly, but do the necessary due diligence to see what alternative means and ways and creative ways we could go about and not actually touch anything related to student performance, achievement, teacher retention or traction or anything of a critical nature involving our students.
Chris Tucker.
With the budget's shortfall, we definitely have to take a look at what belt tightening looks like. Our board, when they changed the school times, they were able to reduce the number of bus routes. Yet we're still busing out of district students. So that's a large cost. But it all comes down to keeping our students and our staff and retaining the good staff. So it's not an easy question to answer. There's, I'm sure, many, many chances and things that can be changed to impact that. But this year's shortfall isn't different from any others that we faced.
Sheri Ann Winter.
There's still a delay. All right, all right. I would take a different approach. As Ashley mentioned, a lot of times our PTO budgets are like $50,000, $60,000. Like we can lean on our PTOs to offer and supplement some educational expenses. And that's one way to look at it. If we just went back and forth around through everything in the budget and really couldn't see any opportunity to cut or reduce something. So I think we definitely need to think outside of the box. I think the PTO budgets are very healthy. I think the parents and community raise a lot of money for the schools and there's no reason why we can't use it as an avenue to supplement things that we need for our budget and for our teachers and classrooms and our students.
Ashley Davis.
I would look at the budget and carefully decide. Anything that does not have a direct impact on our student achievement or our student learning or their mental healths, anything that doesn't touch the student directly, I think would be some of the first things that go. And we could look at administrative costs and see if any of those could be limited or trimmed back. I also think we could look at our technology costs. We have a lot of technology in the buildings, which was necessary during COVID. We had purchased a lot of computers and different types of technology and different programs. Maybe we don't need those anymore. So maybe looking at some of those options to cut back on.
The next question, we will start with William Art Holsworth. A group of parents demanded a book be banned from school libraries that shows a family with same-sex parents. How should the board react?
Well, first off, I don't, I generally don't agree with any book banning. One of the reasons, well, for various reasons. But you tell your kid, you can't read this book, what's the first thing they're going to do when they get home? All right. Second, book banings have been an issue for hundreds of years. It's never made any difference at all. It just comes up as a populist issue every once in a while. So we have to make sure we don't fall prey to that. Again, the board does have policies that allow parents to bring issues that they might have with the curriculum or a book or whatever. That issue, if the book is brought up to the board's attention, we have to consider it. We will do so. We will talk to the academic experts and we'll look at what other school districts are doing as it relates to this title. And then we'll make the best informed decision that we can.
Ernestina Moore.
I think the board should react if it's asked to. We are living in a day and time where we are inclusive and we're welcome of all different walks of life, genders, ethnicity. And to say, to take an immediate action based upon a book showing same-sex marriage, I think would be premature on the district efforts. And if it is brought to the attention of the district where it needs to react, I think it would do as due diligence in getting feedback from members of the community, from students to see what their response and their reaction would be. But I think to take any immediate steps on part of the board would be premature in that space.
Chris Tucker.
Book banning is a very difficult one. If it's brought to the board's attention, obviously that's something the board has to look into and decide. The books themselves, we have many different walks of life that all come together. Some people will have the popular belief that it shouldn't be there and some people will have the popular belief that it should be there or shouldn't be there. And it's ultimately going to have to fall on the board to check out the book, make sure the book's okay. But the public library is another avenue where they can read anything that they want. Thank you.
Sheri Ann Winter.
I believe it is extremely important for the school board to adhere, embrace and promote diversity, equity and inclusion. So this is a perfect example, right? I think it's important to recognize where diversity and inclusion can be upheld. And like I said, we got to be creative. Maybe for that book, we feature it for Pride Month. I think it's extremely important that we embrace the LBGQT plus community. And I feel that the board should have a very strong stance on matters of diversity, equity and inclusion, all the way around, from books to curriculum to activities, events and things that our students are exposed to.
Ashley Davis.
Can you repeat the question, please?
A group of parents demanded a book be banned from school libraries that shows a family with same-sex parents. How should the board react?
So if it's just a book with same-sex parents in the story, that seems benign and that we should be inclusive of all different types of families. If the, I would be more concerned about a book about, like explicitly sexual or inappropriate behavior or content like that. I think that would be a more appropriate discussion for banning a book or having the conversation. Or if it's about a divisive topic that's tearing apart communities, things like that, I think would be more appropriate. But simply having a same-sex couple in a story, that shouldn't be a problem in schools.
She actually read my notes, so can we have her eliminated? Same-sex marriage is a legal reality. So kids are going to get seen out in the street as long as it doesn't involve any, I know there are kids in there, anything provocative inside those pages, I don't think it's going to be a problem. It is something that's legally allowed. As an attorney, I can tell you marriage is a contract sanctioned by the government. If you want to get out of that contract, you got to get government approval. I had a decent talk with my daughter about that when she was five. It is something to come to terms with, though. And I don't think that that should be banned just for having an image of that on the cover. Absolutely not. As long as there's nothing provocative in the pages. Thank you.
The next question, we'll start with Ernestina Moore. What is critical race theory? And do you have any evidence of critical race theory being taught in this school district? Examples, please.
I don't have any knowledge of critical race theory being taught in this district or any other district. Critical race theory is very divisive in various communities for various reasons. And I think it's important for us to make our own personal decisions as it relates to critical race theory because that's something personal to each individual and it's not something that schools or the school board should directly get involved in because it has its place. But it's also a personal decision in terms of whether or not you want to adhere to or you agree with critical race theory.
Chris Tucker.
Critical race theory, CRT, is not currently taught in our schools as far as my six children have told me. However, it is a academic choice if the community is pushing for that. But that's something that ultimately the board will have to decide and take all different accounts into view. Thanks.
Sheri Ann Winter.
So I think I would focus on diversity, equity and inclusion and focus away from the critical race theory. I think, I agree, it has its place at the higher education level, but not in our school district and at our grade school levels. I think it's important, though, to pull out the things that allow us to focus on making sure that our curriculum is inclusive and that we're teaching and embracing diversity and equity. I think that's the most important thing. But I would say we need to focus on that versus critical race theory.
Ashley Davis. What is critical race theory? And do you have any evidence of critical race theory being taught in this school district? Examples, please.
I do not have any direct examples of critical race theory being taught. It's a, it's a very divisive theory and I'm, I hope that, oh my gosh, I'm sorry. Yes, is that better? I don't have any examples, per se, of critical race theory being taught in our schools. It's a very divisive theory. I know there's been some conversations about some of our books that have been being taught and used in middle schools. That might be divisive, but I don't necessarily know that it is critical race theory. But I think we should avoid any divisive topics. We need our kids to unite. We need them to, you know, be a team and support each other and not tear them apart.
Brian Dunn.
Thank you. Number one concerns for the district should be reading, writing and math. Critical race theory is divisive. It's also a distraction that takes time and effort away from those ends. Reading, writing and math. I don't have any evidence of critical race theory in the district. And I think we should continue to move forward as far as pushing for reading, writing, math and relieve ourselves of any other distractions that there may be. Thank you.
William Art Holsworth.
So critical race theory aims to help students identify and critique the causes of social inequality in their own lives and the lives of other people. To the best of my knowledge, it is not something that's taught in any real way, shape or form here in the district or likely in any other primary or secondary schools. It's been more of a political construct of late. Again, as Sheri Ann has said so many times, you know, in general, we need to put a focus on making sure that our environment is welcoming to students and staff and teachers of all identities, races, cultures, religions, ethnicities, nationalities. So if we make a conscious effort of focusing on those things, that's going to help our educational opportunities here. The more we make our students feel welcome, the better they're going to be able to learn in our school system.
And this will be our last question and we will start with Chris Tucker. What role should the board play in protecting the separation of religion and state?
Well, we have a lot of different nationalities, ethnicities, religions. West Bloomfield is definitely a mixing pot of all of that. There are regulations regarding what can be taught religiously and whatnot. Something that should be taught at home through the family or through worship in their own ways. The school system should not have anything to do with that.
Sheri Ann Winter.
So religion plays a huge part of our lives outside of school. Do I think it should be constituted within school? I think that we can use it as an opportunity to make sure that people feel included and build more inclusive conversations without having it be so formal that it's part of the school. So I think there's some opportunities there. But we need to make sure those opportunities are focused on it being more of a way to be inclusive and to honor the diversity that people from different backgrounds will bring to the table.
Ashley Davis.
So I agree, there should be definitely a separation between schools and religion. We should have a culture in our schools and in our district that is welcoming to all religions and all different backgrounds. We have a very diverse population and that's one of our best assets in this school district. So we need to be welcoming and warm and learn from all of the different religions. But we definitely shouldn't be promoting or teaching any of them.
Brian Dunn.
Can I get the question one more time?
What role should the board play in protecting the separation of religion and state?
Just emphasizing that we're not teaching or making any formal implications with regard to religion, one way or another. I think having informal conversations between children can be enlightening. One thing about our district, it's very diverse, everybody knows that. Just simple conversations. One way, one of the best ways to learn is to immerse yourself in other cultures, find new people, have just basic conversations with them. You get to learn a lot. And in that informal setting, our children can learn a lot of new information about other people. It's sometimes a lot more easy and effective than actual book learning. So I think as long as we take more of a hands-off approach, just say no formal instruction on religion and take it from there. If we do have a world religion class, something more clinical, I'd support that as well.
William Art Holsworth.
So separation of church and state. As a public entity, the schools have to make sure that they're not endorsing any one religion. Again, I think we do a pretty good job of that. The diversity of our school district is one of our greatest strengths. There are people of all kinds of different religions here in the district. And as Brian said, learning, having our students interact with each other and learning from each other is a great opportunity for them. I do, the National Council for the Social Studies did have a statement that they put out recently and it goes along the lines of what Brian said about like a world religions class. So what the National Council was suggesting is offering material that encourages student awareness of religions, but not acceptance of a particular religion. Studying about religion, but not practicing religion in the school. Exposing students to a diversity of religious views, but not imposing any particular view. And I'm out of time.
Ernestina Moore.
I think the only role the board should play is to acknowledge and embrace any individual's respective religious beliefs, not to take the position to promote one over the other, but to make sure, again, that we're being inclusive in the sense that we're acknowledging and we're... and respecting whatever someone's particular religious belief is and promoting that from their own perspective. But the role, the role of the board should be to not have any involvement to, again, promote one religion over the other.
Thank you. That concludes the time for questions. The candidates will now be given one minute to make a closing statement in reverse order of opening statements, beginning with Ms. Winter.
Thank you. I hope this was extremely enlightening for everyone. I know I learned so much in this time. I would like to remind you of a couple of things. I've lived in West Bloomfield for 15 years. I'm a dedicated resident. Uh, my two students are super, like, encouraging for me to always make sure wherever there's gaps and processes in the schools, that I try to be part of the solution and not part of the problem. Um, I have a lot of experience, like I said, since kindergarten. Since my daughter was in kindergarten, I've been on a PTO. So, Doherty Shego, West Bloomfield Middle School, because I think it's important to ensure that our children do feel safe, they feel wanted, they feel included, and mental health is big. And coming out of the pandemic, I think there's a lot of areas where there are some gaps that the school district could help with, and I would love to be able to bridge those gaps and make sure that we are making sure that we think about diversity, equity, inclusion, and all the decisions that we make for our children. Thank you.
Chris Tucker.
Uh, thank you for everyone being here and giving us the questions. I definitely appreciate it. Um, but I work for you guys, if elected. Uh, the residents, teachers, staff, children, uh, that's what we're all here for. So, most importantly, I'm here for you guys. You have problems, bring it forward. There's a question and answer session at every board meeting that you can put your two cents in. Uh, send me an email. All of the board members are online with their email addresses on the West Bloomfield site, and I'm sure any of them would be happy to talk to you. But, again, I work for you, so please bring us your problems and questions and we'll see what we can do about it. Thank you very much for your time.
Ernestina Moore.
Good evening again. I know the hour is late, but I'm still excited. I'm excited about the opportunity to sit before you tonight and have you learn a little bit more about me. I'm excited to bring my experience and skill set to the school board. As a labor and employment attorney, I've had the opportunity to work very closely with large and small school districts in terms of being familiar and having a working knowledge with the Open Meetings Act, FERPA, providing real-time counsel during school board meetings to these school boards. And it's just an overall great experience to be in a position where I can take pride in being a district parent, that I can take pride in advocating on behalf of the students and the community. And I think it's a very critical time to want to take advantage, to be in this position because, trust me, it's not anything to take lightly. It's hard work to campaign, it's hard work once you get on the board, it's never-ending, but it's a task that I'm willing to take for the benefit of our parents, our students, and the community at large. So I thank you again for your time. I ask that on November 8th, you go to the mill of your ballot, look for more, and vote Ernestina Moore for school board. Thank you for your time.
William Art Holesworth.
Well, um, thanks, everyone, for being here tonight, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this. I'm, uh, you know, hoping to be on the Board of Education so that, uh, I can help run our school district as efficiently and effectively as possible, make sure that we're here to defend and support our teachers and let them know that they're greatly valued, to help keep our students safe and provide them with the best education that we think we can. I wanna stand on the board up, I wanna be there to push back against any culture issues that may come our way. My top priorities are gonna be the teachers and the students. We need to remedy the pandemic learning loss that we've had recently. We need to support pre-K education any way that we can. Uh, grow our public school enrollment, where I think it 87% or so of all the kids that are actually enrolled in our school district. And, um, again, make sure that our school is as safe and secure as possible and we have the proper mental health resources. Thank you.
Brian Dunn.
Thank you. Uh, as a school of choice district in a high-income suburb, we will be judged by our academic performance and the way we respond to families. My, if elected, my number one promise is that I will focus on the immediate return of proficiency in reading, writing, and math district-wide, uh, by helping and assisting the superintendent in her duties. Uh, my number two focus will be responding to parental concerns, providing transparency for our curriculum, and involving and utilizing our families in the educational process. Board member, email addresses are posted online. At any point, if I do get elected, any concerns, please email me. I'm always happy to talk. I will respond. We can continue to increase our district, uh, and improve its academics. We still have natural advantages against our neighboring districts and financial advantages against private schools and newcomers. We absolutely can put this district in a strong position to thrive, no matter what comes our way in the next few years. But we need to focus our attention on education, supporting parents, students, and teachers. Thank you.
Ashley Davis.
So again, just to kind of recap about myself, I'm a lifelong resident of West Bloomfield, an educator, a very involved parent. I've been attending board meetings for several years. I'm, I have no political agenda to do this. My sole focus is going to be the children and increasing their student achievement, making sure they feel safe and supported in our schools. I would like to see smaller class sizes. I would like to see more residents in our buildings. I would like to make sure that our teachers feel supported and that we retain, or that we attract the most, um, effective teachers and that we support them enough that they wanna stay. Um, I'm running solely on my own dollar. I'm not taking any funding from anybody or any political endorsements. I'm running on my own good merit, my positive reputation in this community, and my pure intentions of increasing student achievement and success, making sure that all students feel safe and welcome in our buildings. Please vote for me on November 8th. Thank you.
And thank you all. I do want to take a moment to acknowledge that Ken Ferguson, a resident, is here today. He has announced that his intention is to run as a write-in candidate, and we just wanted to acknowledge that he is also in the audience. The Legal Women Voters would like to thank the audience, the candidates, and Civic Center TV for making this forum possible. For further nonpartisan information on the candidates, visit vote411.org. Re-broadcast times of this forum will be on the Legal Women Voters website. And the Legal Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned businesses and citizens. Our membership is open to men and women over the age of 16. Remember to vote on November 8th. Thank you.